I'd like to call this, uh, call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of March 6th to, uh, 2019. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, uh, please be sure to pick up a parking coupon on your way out for free parking. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note that the Planning Commission action today is final on the following agenda items. Item 1.2, Special Permit 15019A, item, uh, 1.3, Special Permit 19010, and, uh, item 4.1, County Special Permit 14044A. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is rec- is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 20th, 2019.
Move to approve, Campbell?
Um, I have a revision.
Yes.
Would you accept a revised version?
Yes.
Um, and, uh, my fellow commissioners have, uh, the language in front of them. Do I still have to read it into the record, even if they read it?
Please.
Okay. Harris agreed with her fellow commissioners, noting the unmet need for updated affordable housing in Lincoln in general and in this area in particular. This seems like a good opportunity to ensure that code is enforced and that Lincoln has quality affordable housing, period.
Noted. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a, a motion. We need a second.
Second, Core.
Okay. Any discussion about any of that? Okay, then I think we're ready to call a roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record, and once those items are read, she will ask if there's anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item 1.1 is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 19002 to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed conservation easement of 135 acres, more or less, to preserve native prairie and other natural features of the easement area to be acquired as part of the prairie corridor on Haynes Branch on property located, uh, generally located at 9600 Southwest 84th Street. Item 1.2, a special permit 15019A, allow for a, uh, sixty-two hundred, or 6,250 square foot expansion of the existing building for the sale of alcohol for consumption on and off the premises on, premises on property generally located at 321 Victory Lane. And item 1.3, a special permit 19010 to allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption off the premises on property generally located at 301 Oak Creek Drive. I would note that this is final action on both of these special permits unless, um, uh, an appeal is filed within 14 days, um, to the City Council. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Hi, my name is Tim O'Neal. I'm with O'Neal Heinrich, and I'm here on behalf of GoPuff. And I know this is a little, uh, unique to Lincoln and kind of a start of a probably a new trend. I just want to know if you have any questions on this issue.
Do you wish to take the item off the consent agenda?
I do not.
Okay, okay.
But I do.
But Sandra does, okay.
Yes, I do.
So, um, okay.
And we're referring to Special Permit 19010?
Yeah.
We are.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that takes care of it, okay.
Okay, we will remove item 1.3, uh, Special Permit 19010, and it will have separate public hearing, um, under item, as item 3.1.
Okay. So I think we're ready to entertain a motion for the other two items then.
Move to approve both items?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? We'll vote.
Okay. Beckius?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
There are no, oh.
Go ahead, sorry.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have, uh, copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. Uh, the Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, item 3.1 is Special Permit 19010 to allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption off the premises on property generally located at 301 Oak Creek Drive. Again, this is, uh, final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval. There were no ex parte communications, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Brian?
Um, good afternoon, Brian, Will Plank Department. As Jerry noted, this is a special permit request for off-sale alcohol. The site is, um, just west of downtown, off of Sun Valley Boulevard, which is here. Um, it's a fairly large commercial slash industrial park. Entire park is owned I-1. Property we're talking about is located right here. Um, as I noted in the staff report, it's not that this applicant, um, is intending to sell alcohol from this location. It's not why the special permit's required. It's required because by the state liquor license, um, they would be allowed to have off-sale by the nature of their use. They're required to have a license that has that designation. So, what we've, um, what we've determined here in the city, um, guidance from the Law Department, that based on what they're allowed is, um, generally what we determine which special permit they need. So, because off-sale is allowed, that's why they're getting this special permit. Um, so it's met all the requirements, um, for the special permit, and we're recommending, um, approval of it. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I do have a question. Uh, can you think of any other place in Lincoln where we have off-sale but not sale from premises?
No, I don't know that I can right off the top of my head.
Okay, so this would be a new use in Lincoln?
Yeah, I mean, this use, um, what's being described here, and I think the applicant could probably speak to it, um, is fairly new, although I don't think it's the only one or the first one. I remember there was districts where you can sell alcohol without needing a special permit. So, like I said, I don't know that this is the first one or, um, is the only one, um, in the city, but this is the first one that I can recall having to go through the special permit process with.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested to know if we have other places, not, I mean, I understand, commercial industrial, we can have, uh, we can sell liquor there. What I'd like to know is about the delivery service, because it's an off, off-premise sale. So it's delivered to other folks, and there's not another grocery store in town that delivers groceries with alcohol. They all say, no, thank you.
I could be right, I don't know that.
How this works.
For a fact, but, yep.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Uh, testimony from the applicant.
Hi, Tim O'Neal with O'Neal Heinrich, 800 Lincoln Square, uh, Lick, Nebraska. Um, you're right, this is fairly unique, but it's already done. We have wine delivery services to your door all the time. You know, that's, there is delivery of alcohol existing. I've been contacted by a number of grocery stores. It's going to happen soon in Nebraska, because it's just a convenience, it's a natural extension of what people are already doing. It's permitted by liquor laws. Um, so it, it's coming. I've probably had, in the last year, probably 15 people ask me how to do it, and it is legal in Nebraska. This is the first time it's come up in a planning situation, that's true. But it's coming from grocery stores because it's just a natural convenience, and it's also serves as, really, it, it increases safety to the public as it gets people that are drinking off the road, and it also saves the people that are drinking from being on the road. So it is a good service. Um, let me tell you a little bit about GoPuff, if I can, just because they're a little unique. Um, they don't want to be selling liquor from their, their distribution center. That's really not what they're about. They're a, they're an on-demand delivery service, and it's just not liquor. It's over 2,000 items. I mean, I think if you generally think of it as, as a convenience store, that delivers with a nominal delivery charge. Um, they follow the state statutes in terms of what a third party or the license holder can do for delivery. It's got to be a 21-year-old that delivers, um, versus a 19, which could be in a restaurant. And GoPuff does a little things that are a little bit different. Number one, they scan the ID of anybody they deliver to. So, in addition to checking their ID, they scan it and make sure it's a valid ID. Is it foolproof? No, but since 2015, they've never had a violation, and they've got millions and millions of deliveries. They also check the ID to make sure it matches a credit card on the order, so the two are the same, so you're not getting something goofy going on. They also check the person to make sure they're not visibly intoxicated, because it just won't sell to them. They'll sell them the food that they deliver, but they just won't sell them the alcohol, because that's just not what they do, and that's not what they're about. Um, they will follow the oper- hours of operations, so that when they do deliver, it'll have to be before the hours. It's not when you order, it's when you deliver that the hours of operations apply. We're going to be very careful on that. Um, they're going through all the training that's required for a server in a restaurant for alcohol. Obviously, all those, those catches. Um, they're, they're very concerned about all the drinking aspects of it, because this is what they do. And the last thing they want to do is have a, a service to minor. I mean, they just can't do it, and they haven't. You know, they're, they're all over the country, and I think their record speaks for themselves. Um, we're happy to comply with all the conditions recommended by staff, and we're happy to answer any questions you have, because you're the people that are going to order from us, hopefully, and, uh, so we want to make sure everybody's comfortable with it.
Questions? Yes.
What are your hour, what, what are your clients' hours of delivery?
For the consumer items, it's noon to 4:30 a.m. For liquor, it won't be, obviously, it'll follow statute and, and rules for off-sale.
Okay, so in theory, we could be having residential delivery happening, say, at 11:00 p.m. of liquor?
That's correct.
Okay, and then, um, I'm a little unfamiliar with the, the state licensing laws. Is, is a, when a participant chooses a delivery address, um, does, does it need to be a home? Can it be a business? Can it be a parking lot? How does one identify where delivery is occurring? I'm assuming they enter a address, and any address is a deliverable address, assuming one can find it?
Are you talking about legally or what GoPuff does? Legally, they can deliver it to anywhere.
Well, is there a difference between the two? I guess I don't know.
Yeah, I think there is. I mean, obviously, GoPuff looks at the safety of the driver, too. It's just not the person they're delivering to. So if it's a parking lot, they're not going to do it. I mean, it's just practical matter, you know.
Well, I don't necessarily know the standards and protocols of your client, so I, I'm basing it off of what's legal. So if there's a difference, I'm, I'm happy to hear it.
And they, and they can. I mean, to answer your question, for purposes of the permit, they could deliver it to a parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Legally, that's possible. Uh, GoPuff looks for the address of the applicant. I mean, they're making, they're going the extra steps to make sure that people are matching the driver's license and those sorts of things, so they're not delivering to the wrong people, the wrong occupants of the house or wherever they're at. This isn't going to be something shady. This isn't something that they do. I mean, they're, they're, I get your concern, but I, I don't think that's going to be a problem, because they will be delivering to houses. It could be businesses, it could be my office. Um, I mean, it's possible. What we see a lot of times is restaurants are going to be, start doing this with delivery of their, their food service, that they'll probably deliver a bottle of wine with it, too. And, and that's going to happen real, real shortly. Um, I know that there's at least two grocery stores that are going to also be delivering, uh, alcohol. So GoPuff is a little different animal than that, because of the types of products they, they deliver, because they're more convenience store in nature. Um, the others are kind of different, but.
Sure.
I mean, they all could deliver to the parking lot legally, uh, but as a practical matter, they won't because of safety concerns.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
You. Do we have testimony in support of this item? Do we have testimony in opposition of this item? Do any other staff questions?
Yes.
Yes. We have a staff question.
Brian, any concerns from the city side in terms of alcohol delivery in a residential neighborhood at midnight?
Um, I think we got to separate out two issues we're talking about here.
Mm-hmm.
What is before the Planning Commission Day is a special permit for off-sale?
Sure.
At this location?
Right, which permits delivery service.
So that is a zoning, that is a land use issue.
Right.
Separate from that, then, is the liquor license that allows this activity that you're talking about.
Sure.
Which comes down to City Council for local review. That's a separate issue. So, the question you just put to me, I don't have an opinion on that. That's not a, it's not an issue related to this question for the Planning Commission today.
Okay, so let's talk about land use, then. Do you have any issues in terms of, um, an alcohol delivery happening in residential neighborhoods where, um, planning department's, um, point of view is that, um, off-sale alcohol should not be happening in that location?
Well, you can't give a special permit for on or off-sale alcohol in a residential zoning district. It's not allowed by the ordinance.
Sure.
I think that's.
But this allows for delivery in a residential area?
I'm not arguing that question with you. All I'm saying is this, the, the question before the Planning Commission Day is special permit for off-sale at this location, which it meets all the requirements. You're talking about a licensing requirement which.
Yeah, it's a little tricky, because we have an applicant that is stating that they do not intend to actually have off-sale at this premise.
Right.
So.
And it's only a technical, it's only a technical matter that we're really here talking about this.
Right.
Because it does leave the possibility that, while we're not intending to do it today, but next week our business plan changes, we could do off-sale from here. You could come by here and buy a six-pack of beer. So for that reason, that's why we're doing this.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure. I'm good. Thank you, Brian.
I have a question. This relates to, um, the applicant's, um, assertion that other stores are going to start to do this delivery service as well. Can you imagine, or can you envision where an existing grocery store would need to come before the Planning Commission for a special permit for this use as well?
Um, they might. Here again, it depends on what determination comes from the State Liquor Commission. So it's determined that, you know, I think it would have to be someplace that isn't currently selling alcohol. And so that there's going to be a change, that they now need a license.
Okay.
Yes, I think we could be here having this same, same discussion in that case.
Okay.
Um, but if it's an establishment that's out there that already, either by the zoning district or by special permit, already has one and is authorized under zoning ordinance, then I think they can just, they can start doing it, and that would not come before the Planning Commission.
All right.
The license, it's, it, it may require, and I don't know, I, I don't know enough about it. It may require a modification of state liquor license, I don't know. That may, because those all come before City Council, but I'm not.
Not us.
I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure.
Right, okay, thank you.
I can't say for sure.
Okay. Chris?
So, who does supervise delivery? If that would, where, who, is that through City Council?
Well, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, that's not part of this.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
If anything, it's a function of the licensing. I don't know that it is, but if, if it is regulated in any way, it's a function of the state liquor license.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else for Brian? Thanks. Okay. Applicant rebuttal? Anything you want to say?
Like I said, just to answer your question, it would be the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission.
Thank you.
Anything to do with the, the service and delivery of alcohol that's outside of land use would be governed by the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, and they already have regulations on how this has got to be done and what needs to be on the delivery and how old the driver has to be, and whether this can be a third party or an employee. GoPuff chooses to use its own employees, not third parties, but you can. And it's, it's already regulated by the state, and so those sorts of issues will, will be handled. If there's any abuse or a problem, it'll be right before the commission.
I have a question for you. So have you applied for your liquor license yet?
Uh, we will be this week.
Okay. Um, and then I have a question, it's not really, it's not really pertinent, but I want to know. Um, so I noticed that in your letter, you said that you have your delivery boundaries, and they don't really cover the whole city of Lincoln. Is there a reason why, I mean?
It, we're just getting started in Lincoln, and so we want to make sure the response times are, are, meet people's expectations, because of, it's kind of like if you don't get your pizza for three hours, you know, you get disappointed. Same kind of deal here, if you're ordering, you know, 10 o'clock and you want ice cream, you want ice cream now. So we're trying to meet, uh, customer expectations and see how receptive the community is to the, to the company. And God willing, they expand and, and it does well, and a lot of people are employed in Lincoln.
So did you choose these based on kind of like a drive-time type situation?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to entertain a motion?
Move, approve.
Second.
Campbell? Discussion?
Um, uh, I would, uh, just say that, um, I travel, uh, a lot. Um, I've seen this kind of service in a lot of states. It's legal in Nebraska. It was on consent, because it meets all the requirements, so pretty, pretty standard, as far as I'm concerned.
Yep. Anyone else?
Um, go ahead.
Well, because this was a, a new proposal for Lincoln, it's new here. I wanted to know more about it. I appreciate the time you took to answer our questions.
Hmm?
Um, I, I do understand the difference between the land use issue and the liquor license. Um, and so as far as the land use issue, I believe this location is appropriate for off-sale, and so that's what I'm basing my vote on. But it does make me pause and consider, um, you know, delivering alcohol to underage individuals and, and that kind of stuff. And we're a big, um, college town, so that gives me a little bit of hesitation, too. But as far as land use goes, I think this is, um, appropriate for this spot.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I think the, the land use is appropriate for, for this spot. Um, I do think that there could be potential impact from a land use situation, not from this particular permit, but generally speaking, from the service and the impact that it could have in residential neighborhoods throughout the city. Um, and, um, and especially the times of potential delivery to residential neighborhoods in, in, um, in this, in the city. Um, while this particular permit, um, doesn't need to, to, to involve that discussion, I think it's a worthy discussion to have, um, in terms of the impact that, that this service would bring into residentially zoned neighborhoods. Um, I'll support the motion.
Very good. I think we're ready to vote.
Okay. This is for the conditional approval of Special Permit 19010. Beckius?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Okay. Next item is item 4.1, County Special Permit 14044A, to allow for an expansion of existing commercial feedlot by adding 86,000 broiler chickens in four farms, or barns, on property generally located at 7850 North 148th Street. Staff recommendation is for conditional approval, and this is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the County Board within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
See none.
Tom Chaka, Planning Staff. Um, has read this as a request to expand an existing feedlot by adding four barns. Um, actually, there was a little confusion. The, the applicant's letter said 86,000, but the, um, report from NDEQ says 82,000, so I'm going with 82,000 chickens to expand in the four barns. Uh, the site is located on North 148, between McKelvey and Elbow Road. Um, and this gray area is the line of Waverly's zoning jurisdiction. Um, but the expansion, well, the existing barns and the expansion are all within Lancaster County's zoning jurisdiction. So they don't, they don't have to have approval from Waverly. Here's the site plan, shows the new barns over here. Again, here's the line showing the boundary between the two zoning jurisdictions. Um, with the, um, expansion, um, there would be a total of up to 220,000 chickens. The existing six barns here holds up to 138,000 chickens, and there is also 45,000 turkeys, um, in the other buildings. The applicant, the owner, has, has stated that the turkeys are going to be moved off, not sure when, but to, uh, his other location, that's on the north side of Waverly, which happens to be completely within Waverly's jurisdiction. Uh, the city of Waverly was notified of this, um, expansion to get their any concerns, and they had no concerns with the expansion. Uh, there are no houses within a quarter mile of this, uh, facility, and six houses within a half mile. Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality has inspected the site and found that they comply with Title 130, um, which means a construction and operating permit is not required by NDEQ. The construction and operating permit is what triggers the nutrient management plan. They have done a nutrient-
Tom did a great overview, obviously. This is an area where there's been an existing operation going since the 1960s, I think 1963. Bill still lives on site, and so had progressive success, and now this is an expansion that he's been very diligent about in terms of the information with NDEQ and the nutrition management plan. And I think he's got all his i's dotted and t's crossed, and it's been a good fit for where it's at. As Tom mentioned, there aren't a lot of houses around. It's on a paved road. And I think just last night, Jerry might've got a letter of support from one of the neighbors to the immediate south, talking about how it's just never been a problem, good clean operation. And so I know maybe contrary to other projects like this, if they come before you, this is a very quiet room. And I think that the nature of the existing business and the fact that it's been run so well is evident to that. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. Bill is here. There may be some questions that I can't answer, and he'll come up as the operator. So with that, we're, we're open for questions.
Questions? Yes, please.
Okay, so 82,000 or 86,000?
Well, I'm with Tom. We'll, we'll go with what DEQ said, so.
Where is the stockpile of litter going to be located?
I'll, I'll get an aerial up and have Bill come up and introduce himself. You can stand over at that mic, Bill, if you want.
I'm Bill Bevins. My address is 7900 North 148th Street, Waverly, Nebraska.
So Bill, if you want to point on that map as to where the manure is stored?
Yeah, well, my agreement within DEQ is that all the manure will be sited up in this corner of the property, which is a high point on the property. It's a long ways from the water drainage. The requirement for that storage area is filter strips and berms. And so then we would probably access that storage area through the secondary road on the back of the property. As far as removal of the manure, at this point, it is all going out to a young couple that are farming out at near Gresham, Nebraska. And they're in the process of converting their corn soy rotation into more organic crop farm. So that's their interest in the manure. And they, at this point, we contract, the contract is they're going to take all of it, and they do take all of it. And they try to haul it as soon as they're done harvesting and until they plant in the spring. So when we have to store it for any length of time, it's the manure that comes out of the barns after spring planting, because they're not able, they don't have a place to put it, they're engaged in farming activities. Actually, my goal, and their goal is to, as they get into more organic farming, they're going to have more areas where they can come and get the manure when the traditional crops would still be in the fields. So they're planning on taking more of it during the spring and the summer, so we don't have excessive accumulation. And actually, my goal is, is I would really like to get to a point where when we clean out the barns, it goes directly from the barn into the truck and off the place and out of Lancaster County. So that's, that's my hope and my goal.
How often do you clean out the barns?
Every, the barns are set up in groups of two, and every two barns are cleaned out twice a year. And so, you know, it's rotating through the barns as, as the year goes on. So we're, we're cleaning out the barns rather frequently.
So how, like worst case scenario, how long, I mean, I know you said your goal is to get it right into the truck, but how long would that litter be potentially sitting there before they would come and get it?
Five months.
Okay. Now, I noticed that in the report, they said the wells can't be any closer than 100 feet to the barns. And you have a couple of wells up there to the north. How far away are they? I couldn't see any measurements.
Yeah. And I don't have an accurate number. It's just more than 100 feet.
That's fine.
That I can tell you for sure, but I don't have the exact number.
We have, Tracy, we have surveyed the wells and then created the exhibit, so in AutoCAD, if I had AutoCAD here, I could show you. But, so just want to let you know it's been hard field surveyed.
I'm trusting that it's over the 100, and if not, then they'll do their thing. So you have turkeys now. It looks to me like you have turkeys in three barns.
Actually, that is not the case. The two barns that you see that are kind of straddling the driveway.
Okay, yes.
These two barns, I've been using them for brooder houses for the small turkeys. In turkeys, you brood and then you move to a grower site. But I've been using these two barns for brooding up until just, we took the last group of turkeys out of those barns in December, and we will not be repopulating because we're actually exiting the turkey business. And so there will be no turkeys on the farms.
So right now, there aren't any turkeys?
No turkeys.
In any of those three?
In any of those three.
It appeared to me on the map that that location south of you, kind of down on the corner of Elvo Road, that those might be, is that another chicken farm there, or is that just buildings that look like your barns?
That's my brother's facilities, and they were built for turkey barns. And the Nebraska Turkey Growers Co-op ran a processing plant at Givin, Nebraska, shut down in 2008, and those barns have not had any poultry in them since then. So if there was going to be poultry in there, we'd have to go through quite a permitting process.
Okay. I think that's all my questions.
Other questions? Yes.
I have a question. Since you indicated that the manure pile, the litter, would be in the northeast corner of your property, I'm assuming within the setbacks, but do you know if that manure pile would be close to a neighbor's well on the other side of the property line?
There, there's no wells. That's all crop ground on both corners of, of that place, and they're not even irrigating over there.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that's true.
Thank you.
Tracy.
So my understanding is, is that DEQ did not require the nutrient management plan. However, because of the health department's requirements, you did the plan, and then that plan then would correspondingly be resubmitted to DEQ for approval? Is that correct? So the plan that was developed by, by nutrient advisors, has that been submitted to DEQ? Even though they said they didn't want it?
I don't think, no, I don't think we have submitted that to DEQ.
Okay. And so, so, so the plan has been completed?
Yes.
But it has not, it has not been submitted to DEQ?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Dick.
I know chicken manure is very hot, and it needs to be aged?
Yeah.
To be properly applied for crops and such without burning them?
Yeah.
How, where is that aging process happening? In your five month pile, or is it happening at the new farms?
It's primarily happening in my five month pile.
Okay. Is that turned at all or anything?
It's, no, not on a consistent orderly planned basis. It is turned when we add manure, when we bring out manure, we then have to come in with a loader and peck it up, and at that time, we kind of stir the whole thing.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anything else? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have testimony in support of this item? Do we have testimony in opposition of this item? Do we have any additional staff questions?
I have one.
Tom.
It's not about the specific application. I was just curious if there has been any progress on a public input process on feedlots and since we had our big discussion.
Are you referring to putting together a group to look at?
Yeah, so, so planning commission recommended putting together a kind of a working group or a public input process, and I went to the county commissioners, and I'm just curious if something has, obviously, this is a very uncontroversial application and no testimony in opposition, but we have had some cases where that was not so. So I'm, I'm curious if, if there's an effort underway.
Yes, there is. Our, we, our working group is now established. We have 10 people with varying, varying backgrounds, and our first meeting is next week.
Great. Great. Thank you.
I have a question about this application. I'm just really looking at the analysis. Point number 12, this has to do with what was, what needs to be submitted to DEQ. So the health department asked for the nutrient management plan. And our analysis here says that it will be sent on to DEQ. Is that a misunderstanding? Does DEQ need to see this again, or is this a recommendation of the health department to DEQ?
It's a recommendation. It's also a condition in 2.2. 2.2.1 says, "As part of occupying the barns, the permitee shall obtain a construction and operating permit and nutrient management plan from DEQ." My understanding is DEQ has not seen this nutrient management plan. And basically, from what I was told on the phone, they wouldn't really review it without first going through the step of applying for a construction and operating permit.
So that's when they'll see it?
Right. The construction and operating permit is what triggers the nutrient management plan.
But it is a condition of approval.
Yes. Well, it's a condition before they start operating.
Before. Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks, Tom. Applicant rebuttal? Mike? None? Okay. We are then ready to entertain a motion.
I would move approval.
Second. Becky S. Discussion?
Seems Bevins, Bevins Barnes has demonstrated their ability in the past to operate a fit operation and also seems to have demonstrated the ability to be a good neighbor. So I will support the expansion of, of his current use.
I mean, total concurrence.
Yep. Sublogical expansion of a, a well-run operation, existing operation.
Tom, you kind of took the words right out of my mouth. I mean, it's obviously he's running a reputable operation by the lack of, of opposition to the permit.
We support from closest neighbor.
Yeah. So that speaks highly, and I thank you for being a reputable business person. That's great.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of county special permit 14044A. Becky S.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Joy.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Shear.
Yes.
Motion carried eight to zero.
This time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so.
Cock-a-doodle-doo. [laughter] [inaudible].
Yes, please.
Okay, so 82,000 or 86,000?
Well, I'm with Tom. We'll, we'll go with what DEQ said, so.
Where is the stockpile of litter going to be located?
I'll, I'll get an aerial up and have Bill come up and introduce himself. You can stand over at that mic, Bill, if you want. Just introduce yourself.
I'm Bill Bevins. My address is 7900 North 148th Street, Waverly, Nebraska.
So Bill, if you want to point on that map as to where the manure is stored?
Yeah, well, my agreement within DEQ is that all the manure will be sited up in this corner of the property, which is a high point on the property. It's a long ways from the water drainage. The requirement for that storage area is filter strips and berms. And so then we would probably access that storage area through the secondary road on the back of the property. As far as removal of the manure, at this point, it is all going out to a young couple that are farming out at near Gresham, Nebraska. And they're in the process of converting their corn soy rotation into more organic crop farm. So that's their interest in the manure. And they, at this point, we contract, the contract is they're going to take all of it, and they do take all of it. And they try to haul it as soon as they're done harvesting and until they plant in the spring. So when we have to store it for any length of time, it's the manure that comes out of the barns after spring planting, because they're not able, they don't have a place to put it, they're engaged in farming activities. Actually, my goal, and their goal is to, as they get into more organic farming, they're going to have more areas where they can come and get the manure when the traditional crops would still be in the fields. So they're planning on taking more of it during the spring and the summer, so we don't have excessive accumulation. And actually, my goal is, is I would really like to get to a point where when we clean out the barns, it goes directly from the barn into the truck and off the place and out of Lancaster County. So that's, that's my hope and my goal.
How often do you clean out the barns?
Every, the barns are set up in groups of two, and every two barns are cleaned out twice a year. And so, you know, it's rotating through the barns as, as the year goes on. So we're, we're cleaning out the barns rather frequently.
So how, like worst case scenario, how long, I mean, I know you said your goal is to get it right into the truck, but how long would that litter be potentially sitting there before they would come and get it?
Five months.
Okay. Now, I noticed that in the report, they said the wells can't be any closer than 100 feet